Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 19th, 2023 meeting of the City of Everett Planning Commission. Kathy, would you please take the role?
Chair Chatters.
Here.
Commissioner Hatkins.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Zalinski, can I call on you to read the land acknowledgement, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would be honored. The City Planning Commission wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stuhubish people and their successors, the Tleilip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you, Commissioner Zalinski. Okay, moving on to the meeting minutes from our prior meeting on August 15th. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Well, second.
Thank you. Kathy, would you?
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Abstain.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Abstain.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to reports. Do Commissioners have any reports to offer this evening? Okay, staff comments?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Chatters, members of the Commission. Yorick Stevens watched, uh, planning director after a month off last, uh, last month from this meeting, and thanks to Becky, Jennifer, Kembra, and of course, always Kathy and Ayana for helping to run that smoothly. I watched the video and was, uh, was pleased and also informed myself about how that turned out. So thanks to all the folks for stepping in there. I want to announce Comprehensive Plan Expo this Thursday at Everett Station in the warehouse room from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM. I don't think planning commissioners necessarily would get much out of it. You get, uh, expoed to every, uh, every time you come into these chambers, but for folks who are watching online who have an interest in the comprehensive plan, there will be some presentations, there will be staff from planning, public works, parks, and Everett Transit available to talk through their different areas at tables, and we'd be happy to, um, explain any questions that you have, take any comments that you have, and overall just be available as a resource for the comprehensive plan update. Again, that's this Thursday, 5:30 to 8:30 PM, Everett Station. Middle housing guidance from the State Department of Commerce. If you Google, or excuse me, if you use your favorite search engine to search for Commerce House Bill 1220 guidance, you will find yourself there. Three in particular that are, I found a phenomenal, interesting, and extremely useful resource that provides essentially a complete set of development regulations and design guidelines for middle housing that could apply to Everett. I think we'll probably not take this whole cloth, uh, but we'll use a lot of the pieces in there to supplement our existing codes and regulations and fit within there. Shout out to Department of Commerce and the consultant team that put this together. I will pass around, uh, an example of it so you can take a look at it, and if Commissioners want a printed copy, we'd be happy to run some off for you. And then, of course, the version is available online. This gets into different options for intensity of zones, so four different options for what they've, uh, prepared as an overlay zone, uh, gets into all of the design standards, including an eye towards objectivity, so it's consistent with the recent state legislation and designed with that in mind, but it gets to a lot of the things that folks have been fretting about a little bit with how is this middle housing going to fit within the neighborhood? And I think from what I see here, it looks like, uh, it is, uh, very strongly, uh, focused on that compatibility and consistency. Gets into landscaping and lighting, parking and loading, slope standards, what to do with steep lots like we have in, in Everett here, uh, different building types, um, uh, how to deal with frontage zones and porches and encourage dooryards, stoops, common entries, uh, exterior elements and materials, public frontage and relationship to the street, all kinds of, uh, really fascinating and helpful, um, regulations that we will take into consideration as we move that middle housing ball forward. There's one kind of particular question that I'm curious about, uh, which is, this is designed to have specific lanes for specific building types, duplex, fourplex, townhouse, cottage apartments, and a couple of, maybe seven or eight of them. Basically would require that a developer pick one of those lanes, and then there's a set of, uh, design, uh, development regulations that would regulate the development. Another option is to leave it a little bit more flexible within the bulk parameters, and that is originally how I had been thinking about it, kind of let the market decide what goes on within, uh, your height limit, your lot coverage limit, and your setbacks and everything. But really interesting, and, and that's kind of one thing that we'll want to talk through with you, so we'll assign this reading, uh, when it comes time to have this as an agenda item before you again, but if you're eager to learn more, again, folks who are tuning in online, go to Department of Commerce House Bill 1220, uh, website, and you can see these fantastic, um, these fantastic resources. Accessory dwelling unit ordinance is in effect, and, uh, staff put together a really helpful frequently asked questions document that's available on our website, and remember to check the interactive accessory dwelling unit dashboard so you can see which, uh, developments that have come in and how many are under review and where, and some of the details around that. Um, I haven't checked in, in the, I, I don't think that we have any that are using the new rules in yet. This is still only a month or two old, but I have heard that there are some under development. So that's something that I'll come back to. I know this was a really interesting one, uh, with some examples when we see the first ones in the gate. That's all I have for staff comments this evening.
Any questions about staff comments? Okay. Quick question, since you mentioned ADUs. I, I continue to hear folks, uh, in the community asking about pre-approved ADU plans. Is that something that we will be revisiting?
Yeah, we hear about that, uh, all the time too, from the community, from the council and others, both as a way to streamline the process and get more housing at, uh, affordably, but then also to maybe encourage and incentivize good design. If your pre-approved ones are a positive, uh, addition to the neighborhood, then that'd be a good way to, to, um, encourage that to happen is by making a faster process for that. There are some obstacles to it for sure. What our, uh, our planning team tells me is that it's so rare to have a lot that can take a pre-approved plan without any modifications, and once you have even a little bit of a modification, it sends it into a different lane. We do have that on our work program. I don't think it's going to come in the next weeks or even months, um, but we've heard the calls for that, and, uh, and we'll have that on our work program.
Thank you. We now have an opportunity for public comment. To those of you who are joining us remotely, please mute your microphone, or if you are calling in, mute your phone by pressing star six. At each opportunity for a public comment, I'll ask if anyone wants to speak. If you're participating remotely and would like to provide comment, unmute your microphone or press star six on your phone. Please provide your name for the record, and when you're done, please mute again. Uh, if you are in attendance and would like to comment, please fill out a speaker sign-in sheet located on the table by the door. Unless we have someone who would like to offer public comment right now, we won't make you fill out the sheet. Okay, all right. Kathy, do we have anyone online who would like to, to speak? All right, thank you. Okay, then we're going to move on to Agenda Item 4A, the School Height Allowance Code Amendment Briefing.
Okay, so this is a code amendment that was, uh, brought to our attention by the two school districts that serve Everett, Everett School District and the Mukelteo School District. It's been an item of concern for them for a number of years, and I think they brought comments into the rethink zoning process, but we're told that that was outside of the scope for that, and so they brought it back again recently as we're getting close to the time, uh, when, uh, I think each of the school district has a project in mind that, uh, would need to, uh, potentially exceed the 28-foot height limit that is, um, that is on that site. So staff developed, uh, the following proposal to provide a route for, um, uh, to potentially exceed the underlying zone height limit when the project is approved under a administrative use or conditional use permit process. I will go through a little bit of, uh, background, describe the proposal, and take some questions. We have 22 public and four private K through 12, oh, skipped the first slide, nope, did not. 22 public K through 12 schools or school properties in the city and four private ones. 18 out of those 26 schools or properties are in zones that limit buildings to no more than 28 feet high. This whole project, um, is about only K to 12 schools, so not touching colleges, uh, technical schools, or, uh, daycares, those types of things. So K to 12 schools, whether public or private. This is what I thought might be first. Here's the definition in our code for a school, um, and you see the focus there on elementary, junior, and senior high schools and related uses, and what is excluded in the bottom half of that. We have specific use standards for schools, um, that apply on top of the, the normal development regulations, and, uh, the section A there focuses this section on schools, uh, including colleges and universities, uh, but does not apply to private training schools, uh, has requirements in B for where you could locate new elementary and middle schools and high schools, and then C and D are the two that we're going to have some changes proposed to. C requires that structures be located 25 feet away from adjacent residentially zoned properties, and then any building over 25 feet in height, and that's not very much, uh, additional height that's currently allowed for most of these, would need to be set back another one foot for each foot over 25 feet in height. And then D would not be any change, smaller than 1,000 square feet buildings, um, do not have to go through as much of a process. Schools are allowed in, by different approval, uh, methods depending on the zone. In the RS and the R1 are lowest intensity residential zones, it's a conditional use process. In the R2, R2A, UR3, and UR4, so the rest of the residential zones, it's an administrative use process, and on the next slide, I'll talk through what that means. Uh, in our commercial and mixed-use zones, it's a permitted use, and then the light industrial, it's an administrative use, and prohibited in the high industrial and ag zones. I don't know that we expect a whole bunch of new schools, but this would define the process for remodel or an expansion. Conditional and administrative use permits. A conditional use permit is kind of the, the highest level of review. Both of these allow conditions, different decision-making body. Conditional use permit is a hearing examiner decision, um, and administrative use permit is a planning director decision. Both have public notice posting on the site that there's an application in and mailing to neighboring property owners. It's a wider radius for the conditional use permit, 500 feet, than it is for the administrative use permit. Typo on the screen, that should read 150 feet, not 500. And then there are specific criteria for approval of the permit, uh, for each one of them. Things like adequacy of public facilities, compatibility of structures with surrounding properties, impact of traffic, uh, landscaping, buffering, screening, generation of nuisance irritants such as, uh, noise, smoke, glare, visual blight, or other undesirable impacts. Yeah, so you see the common between those two is that both look for specifically compatibility of proposed structures with surrounding properties. Both look specifically at landscaping, buffering, and screening, and both look specifically at the gener- generation of nuisance irritants. So only if a proposal is, uh, able to meet those criteria or be conditioned or mitigated such to meet those criteria could it be approved. A little bit about why we may need to exceed 28 feet in some cases. Like I said, there's not a lot of land for new schools, so for the most part, we're going to be working with the land for schools that we already have. Uh, this slide shows the Washington State Office of Financial Management does forecasts for, uh, counties throughout the state. It just released, uh, new sets within the past year, and what this shows is by age bracket, in darker blue, the population in 2022, and then in lighter blue, you can see the growth that's expected over the next three decades. Probably your eye gets drawn to that 85-plus number. Uh, that's definitely going to be a, a topic of conversation as we go through the comprehensive plan update. Certainly, you've heard much about the, uh, the graying of, of the nation and the world, uh, but here we're focused on the school age population roughly five to 19. Uh, and even though the, uh, the older demographic is going to grow faster, there is still expected to be substantial growth in school age population within Snohomish County. We have 157,000 youth now and expect that to grow, um, that looks like another typo there, I'm sorry. Yeah. Grow by 14% anyways. The 21,000 is correct, I believe, but I can double-check that. So Snohomish County expected to grow 21,000 youth. Currently Everett has 12% of the county's, uh, youth, and Everett has a responsibility to plan for 20% of the county's overall population growth. So if you take a future in which we still have 12% of the county's youth and maybe attract more, uh, of other age groups, then our share of the county's growth in five-to-19 year olds would be 4,000. Um, if we take a straight proportion of the county's growth across all age groups, that would be the higher number of 6,000 new school-aged population within the, uh, this goes past our comprehensive plan, planning period to 2050. Looked to the Office of, uh, Superintendent of Public Instruction for some standards on how many, uh, how much building area we would generally need to serve that growth in school population, and it's kind of a startling number. I, I put this in the potential category because there's a lot of things that would need to line up for this, but at least potentially up to half a million or more square feet of school space that we need. Now, go back to the comment about not much land for new schools, and there isn't much room for that other than going up. So we have some policy guidance in the comprehensive plan. This is a change to the development regulation, so that's where we look for guidance on, uh, on this, and we saw some supportive policies, um, in that comprehensive plan. Uh, we need to provide sufficient land for the community to grow. We need to encourage efficient utilization of land, public infrastructure, uh, and public services that further the goals of the comprehensive plan. We should coordinate with school districts for, uh, adequate supply of open space lands, so that would mean leaving some land that's not buildings within those school properties, hopefully. Capital facilities ele- uh, element, we need to maintain and accommodate the projected growth over the planning period, and, uh, consider the environment and ways to minimize impacts to it in siting, construction, and use. So the proposal would, um, would basically shift from using the height limit and this, uh, rigid limit on how close a building could be to an adjacent residential property, and send that over into the administrative use and the conditional use process. So it would look at proposals on a site-by-site basis and compare them against those criteria. The proposal would strike that buildings over 25 feet must have an additional setback of one foot for each foot over 25 feet in height. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't, uh, still seek to follow that. Obviously, an important part of, uh, of compatibility with neighboring properties is not looming over them, uh, with buildings or shade or lights or noise and all of those sorts of things. And then also you can see a, a new C that would allow schools to exceed the maximum building height when considered under administrative or conditional use permit. So that means that even if it's a permitted use in the use matrix in the UR, uh, no, that would be like the neighborhood business zone, um, to take advantage of this, you would still need to go through an administrative use permit process. Most of those zones have higher height limits already, so I don't anticipate that being necessary, but just in case, we've got that provision there. We're also including a very minor, uh, housekeeping cleanup here. Uh, the titles in the use matrix didn't line up exactly with the titles in the definitions, and so we just made a couple of changes to the wording there. This is non-substantive. I issued a determination of nonsignificance under State Environmental Policy Act a couple of weeks ago, and the determination of nonsignificance, and more importantly, the environmental checklist are available on the Planning Department webpage under active code amendments. Um, I think this is important because the environmental checklist is like a mini environmental impact statement where go over all of the elements of the environment and at least in a, in a, in a summary form, explain what the impact of this proposal would be on, um, let's say, air quality. So it's a good source of the policy analysis to supplement this, um, uh, this, this proposal. Public outreach, this is describing, we've not had any comments yet, but this is describing what we're doing. I'm trying to add this as a prompt in our staff reports and presentations going forward, both at the beginning of a project and then looking back on the project and what we've heard. So, uh, we already have under, uh, the Planning Department's webpage, if you go to code amendment projects, and then you can see school height amendments right there, and you can find all of the documents, memos, environmental review, and then everything else that we produce through the life of the project will be available there, and I think we have some news flashes about this, uh, proposal as well. Uh, we send out, of course, to the Planning Commission Agenda mailing list. We have a Neighborhood Association mailing list, uh, that should provide a little bit more awareness out in the community. We have a State Environmental Policy Act mailing list, and if anybody's interested in receiving these kinds of notifications, that's where to look. Just get in touch with me or Kathy, and we can get you on these mailing lists, and, uh, you will be aware of all planning projects. And then the legal requirement to publish notice of the public hearings in the Everett Herald. So that's what we're planning for public, uh, outreach. If anybody has any other ideas on how to get the word out, um, that's why we have this here to, uh, make that suggestion. Now I just have pictures of every school in the city. Um, I will scroll through a couple of them so you get the idea. Whittier Elementary, Hawthorne, you can see kind of in real life how these schools interact with their neighborhood. Garfield, Everett Christian School. So a lot of these are pretty close in to neighboring, uh, residential. Schools are made to be integrated with neighborhoods. This is North Middle, uh, Everett High.
Is Everett High already in violation of the building limit or height limit?
No, Everett High has a higher height, so not all of these have the 28-foot height limit. Everett High, um, has a four-floor height limit, and probably would have been at least the older buildings built before this, uh, height limit was established. Immaculate Conception, Sequoia. Jackson Elementary is the one that actually prompted this, and, um, uh, we should see some, uh, proposed, uh, application coming in fairly soon for this one. Um, I believe they were looking to build it, um, to two or, two or three stories, um, and this does have a, a 28-foot height limit. Forest Park Adventist Christian School, View Ridge Elementary, Lowell Elementary, North Shore Christian, Madison, Evergreen, Cascade, almost the same picture, Mary Magdalene, Emerson, Horizon, the red roofs, Challenger, the, uh, rectangle shape, Aces High in there somewhere, Explorer. I believe Explorer was the other one that may have a construction project coming up soon. Eisenhower, it's interesting, we have a whole bunch of schools right on the city limits in, uh, in Silver Lake neighborhood. James Monroe, that yellow line is the city limits, if you can see it. Silver Lake Elementary, so all three of those last ones were right up on the boundary, and that's it.
Is View Ridge, uh?
And I, they, this, this wound up being like 24 out of the 26, I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
So if you didn't see View Ridge.
Yeah, no, I think, I think I saw View Ridge, but is that one just, because that one was recently, I think that might be our most recently remodeled elementary school in the Everett School District. Is that one under 28 feet?
I think it would need to be.
Huh, okay.
But I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a note to look into that. There are variances in other methods, or maybe it was, um...
That one's just too, sort of, hmm.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Flappers help.
Sorry.
So I understand that, like Penny Creek is not in the city limits, but it's part of the Everett School District, so I don't understand how the relationship between the schools that fall in city limits but are still, or are not in the city limits but are in the district, how those things are going to match up, or are they just not going to?
Yeah, so any construction to Penny Creek would be under the responsibility of Snohomish County. Uh, so Snohomish County actually has, I modeled some of this off of their code provisions. They have a similar kind of, um, exemption for schools. I think there's a standard, uh, number, and then you can exceed it through a conditional use permit process. But, yeah, we may have Everett residents may go to that school, but the construction and maintenance of it is all under county jurisdiction.
Is Penny Creek part of the, um, the annex, the annex plan? I might not think of it.
Probably, I'm not familiar with it exactly, but if it's in, if it's north of 128th, then yes.
Yeah, it's before, uh, Seattle Hill Road too. Okay, thanks.
So if we annexed, then this regulation would apply to it after that point.
Yorick, I guess I have two questions. Uh, one, looking on Exhibit A on the map, I know you said that school doesn't include universities, but this map does include WSU Everett. Was that just to give us a reference point, or was there?
Yes. This was, that, okay, there, actually, no, the reason for that is that the use codes in the assessor include all of the schools, so I think our GIS department pulled everything with the school's use code, and, uh, we did not go through to manually remove those.
Okay.
But this would not apply to Wazoo Everett or Everett Community College, both of which do have the 28-foot height limit, but I think they're under, uh, I have not gone in depth on what their major institution master plan or PDO or whatnot is there, but...
My other question was, I, this also includes what's indicated as the athletic complex, which I think is the stadium as well as the administration building.
Yeah.
I guess my question was, would, I don't, I mean, I know the administration building is still relatively new, I don't know that the district would embark on building more administrative facilities, but in the future, if there was, I, it, I guess maybe it seems to me, maybe the definition's a little squishy on that.
Yeah.
About whether or not that would fall under the, this or not.
Right, good question. I don't think it would, because the use would be office or administrative function, and same with the stadium would be stadium. Um, we want it to be a little bit more broader with the properties that we listed on here because potentially in the future, maybe the stadium property or the Longfellow Building get, does get turned into a new school property. So we tried to catch, uh, properties that were owned by the school district, even if there's no plans whatsoever to build a school on them. But if it was for administration or a different type of a use, it would, this would not cover it.
And I guess I just was looking at the definition, it means that public or private facility provide for teaching or learning. I mean, someone could jam that in that definition, I mean, tell me teaching and learning doesn't happen down to the administration building at some level on some times. Anyway, just a thought about.
Yeah.
If, if that was something, if that had been thought about, or...
Yeah, there is, um, our job in administering the land use code is to find the closest definition to any proposed use, and so I would, I would call that an office use, and we'd go to the hearing examiner to tussle over it.
Right, okay, good, okay. That was it, thank you.
So is it, is it then? So is it then a correct understanding that Jackson Elementary has expressed that a 28-foot height limit would be problematic in terms of them constructing a building to meet the needs of their future population?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what I've been told. Yep.
A question on the proposed amendment to 1913-180. Under the new C or is it B? There's a lot of letters there. Structures shall be located a minimum of 25 feet from adjacent residentially-zoned properties. I questioned the need for the word adjacent in that sentence. If they're 25 feet from residentially-zoned properties, whether or not there's an adjacent property in between shouldn't matter.
Yeah. Good point. I will, in the next draft, I will strike that. I agree.
And I assume that if there is that instance, and there is a proposal to go north of 28 feet or whatever is being proposed, it would go under the administrative review or conditional use approval, and screening would then be probably part of the approval process?
Some mitigation for the impact of the height and the bulk and all of that, yeah. I mean, I'm sure both the school district for what will seek to minimize, you know, center the property. Sometimes it's just not possible, though. There may be some instances where there's a school and a playfield, and they want to keep the school running, so they're going to build it over on the playfield, and it just kind of is forced closer to the edge of the property line.
Yeah. No, I just think it's important to treat the residentially-zoned neighbors appropriately if you're putting a big mass nearby.
Yeah.
What's the, what is the process going forward to adopt this? It seems very logical.
Yeah. We would have a public hearing at your next meeting and ask for a recommendation. We'll draft a resolution, and that will go to the City Council. City Council would have a briefing, second reading, and their own public hearing, and that's the process.
Okay. Additional questions, comments? Okay. We have an opportunity for public comment on this subject. Do we have anyone here in the gallery who'd like to comment? Kathy, do we have anyone joining us remotely? Okay. Okay, then I think we can move on to Agenda Item 5A. We're going to revisit the housing element.
Yeah, there was a lot of information at the last meeting. I will quiet this. I don't have slides. Just there was a lot of information at the last meeting, so met with the chair earlier this week, and we thought it would be good to give an opportunity. Not everyone was here, myself included, at the last meeting. So really, just wanted to give everybody an opportunity to ask any further questions or have any discussions or deliberations. Again, we threw a lot at you last week. We're still working through all of it. Housing is about half of the entire comprehensive plan update, and there are more angles that we're working on it that I can even almost list. We're working on the draft environmental impact statement, which is going to be the vehicle for existing conditions in terms of what we have on the ground and what we've seen. We're looking at using 1990 to 2020 for some trends in history, looking at maybe a little bit more qualitative or early data on what's happened since 2020. Obviously, a very impactful couple of years, but the census makes for a nice base year. And then we'll go through the normal environmental impact statement process of looking for potential adverse environmental impacts on the housing topic, and then potential mitigation measures. We have this analysis of barriers that Kathy distributed to you. This came up as a question at the last meeting. We will go through and fill that out and actually have through the middle housing work program. We've filled out a gap analysis just like that that went through all the barriers to the middle housing specifically. You know, it's going to be tough to say whether unclear development regulations is a barrier to housing or something. But we do, we've done interviews with developers and affordable housing providers, and so has the state and others. So there are some kind of crowdsourced responses to what those barriers are. I would love to hear if you have any ideas there. Racially disparate impacts analysis, housing needs analysis, and more guidance documents and suggestions that you can, then you can shake a stick at. So the answer is out there. We just need to synthesize it. One that I was just looking at today, one of the really important topics for us is mitigating displacement. Puget Sound Regional Council has a housing innovations program with toolkits across a bunch of different topics, and one of them is increasing neighborhood stability by mitigating residential displacement. So there's all kinds of resources. Department of Commerce has them. So that's kind of where we're at. If you have any questions or topics of conversation, be happy to jump into those. Yeah.
So Commissioners, the reason why we put this back on the agenda is because we thought this might be an opportunity for you to just kind of brainstorm some questions you might want the staff to research for when this comes back up for discussion again, because obviously, it's going to come back. It's a very weighty topic. So if there are things that you are just kind of thinking you might want information around, this would be a good opportunity to give, to give the staff a heads up about And that could also be done by email at a later time.
Yeah. I'll read, maybe if this prompts some thoughts. In the Commerce Housing Guidance for Updating Your Housing Element, a lot of this stuff, by the way, has been under development. Pandemic and all these other things delayed a lot of these inputs. So middle housing missed the middle housing grant. All the previous times we've talked housing, we did not have a final guidance from the state. A lot of this stuff is falling into place, and again, some really excellent work. Guidance from Commerce on doing a housing needs analysis, and here are some questions for us to think about. Who lives and works here, and what are their demographic and socioeconomic characteristics? What types of housing currently exist in the community? Are there groups of people unable to find safe and affordable housing that meets their household needs? If so, what are their housing needs? How many new units are needed to accommodate current needs as well as planned population growth over the 20-year planning horizon? How is this broken down by income level? That, of course, we have the targets that were presented to you last week that came out of Commerce and Snohomish County tomorrow. What types of housing could accommodate these needs and price points? Is there enough buildable land capacity to accommodate this growth in housing diversity? And I think that last one's not a question. An inventory and analysis of existing and projecting needs. So those are some of the questions that we will be answering. We have a lot of the data, and it's kind of a matter of compiling it. I know questions came up last meeting about the size of the building and its connection to affordability. This kind of assumption that if it's high-rise, it can be affordable, and if it's detached, that it cannot, and kind of a simplistic way of looking at it. And I think, as Becky said, it's a required element of our analysis that we need to turn this in, although it does kind of make sense. It is very, very hard to get deeply affordable detached housing if you've got a 5,000, 8,000 square foot lot as a starting point. That is possible with high-rise. You can have expensive housing, and you can have subsidized and affordable housing income We are working with a consultant on a tool to take our three alternatives that we developed and have approved through the council for inclusion in the environmental impact statement. And it's a tool that will translate that into kind of an expectation of development, almost a buildable lands analysis. Like buildable lands, it'll probably assume pretty close to a build-out of the higher-intensity stuff. The middle housing is a little bit more interesting because it's a matter of picking which parcels are likely to develop over the planning period, but that most of the properties within the city will remain relatively constant. That will, that should be a pretty exciting tool because it'll not only deliver statistics on the performance of the alternatives in terms of number of units, always depending on the inputs that you give it, the number of square feet per unit and affordability and everything, but also a visualization of these scenarios that you can look at 3D and see what it might look like in terms of boxes and rectangles anyways in an actual street. That's going to be an important input to the rest of the environmental impact statement because that will further define from the maps that you've seen into kind of numbers per parcel, pretty much, of what is assumed for the three alternatives. So that's kind of where we're at with housing planning, and we will definitely be back before you with more on that. Part of your packet from last month, and it was just copied forward this month, is the housing policy worksheet. We have lots more of those cells filled in. We've continued to work. I didn't want to change anything and make you reread something you'd already read, so we didn't include that in the packet. But we've got some more work on revising the policies as well as the structure of the element itself. So everything, I think, is progressing pretty, pretty well and pretty smoothly on that housing front.
Wonderful. Commissioners, any additional questions or comments at this time on that issue? Okay. We have one last opportunity for public comment. Do we have anyone joining us at this point? Okay. And I think that brings us to the end of our agenda, so we are adjourned. Thank you.